Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Hartford Common Council for Tuesday, June 11th. Prior to this meeting, notice was given to the public by posting an agenda on the city office meeting board, city office meeting board lower level, and library bulletin board. In addition, the Daily News was given notice and agenda of this meeting at least 24 hours ago. A call to meeting order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Shanna.
All alderpersons are present, and the mayor is absent and excused.
Yeah, the mayor is up in Woodruff, his mother is in the hospital, and keep the mayor and his family in your thoughts and prayers. Okay, unanimous consent agenda, Shanna.
So I'm going to seek a motion and a second to approve the common council minutes of May 28, 2024.
Tina?
Yep.
Oh, is there a second? Jeff?
Motion by Alder Person Savage, seconded by Alder Person Turchi, approving the common council minutes of May 28, 2024.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item, communication. Shanna, one more time.
So I'm seeking approval to move the August 13, 2024, common council meeting back to August 20, because we have an election on the 13th. So I'm hoping that's okay.
Any comments or questions on that?
This is common for us to do anytime we have an election at the same time as a meeting.
Do we want a motion on that, Steve?
I motion approve.
Okay, is there a second by Tony? All right. Kohler and Garza. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, next item is appearances and citizen comments. Anyone wishing to make a public comment, please take your stand, tell us your name and address. Carrie?
Yeah, Carrie. It's Carrie Johnston at 4160 North Main Street here in Hartford. I am coming because later on in your agenda, once again, you have a concept plan that you're going to be looking at that surrounds my property. And I've been to every single meeting for this coming, for this particular project since throughout the years. The reason that I'm asking is just for a little bit of consideration on your part when you're looking at it. Actually, you know, looking at the plan, it's not horrible, but there is one side of my property, the north side, that they have four houses plotted for my one acre long lot. It's pretty tight and it's pretty small. So I'd like you to just kind of take a look at that. Really, all I'm hoping for is they'll take one house out and make 30 acres on there. I'm hoping that you guys maybe have some things that you can talk with the developer on and see if there's something we can do. I've been there for 25 years. This is going to impact us 100% because the property is a U shape around us. So we're not backing up against any other older properties or anything that are bigger. So again, we're going to be highly impacted by what you guys decide to do with this concept planned. Okay? Thank you for your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Hello, board. My name is Jim Peevo Varcek. I just wanted to introduce myself to you. I am running for state assembly, the 98th Assembly District. As you're probably aware, the legislative maps were redrawn, and the new map, we are now in a new district. It goes from Hartford, Aaron Richfield, all the way down to Sussex, Lisbon, and Merton. So I lived in the town of Aaron. I've been there for 14 years. My kids all went to Aaron's school. They, one just graduated from Hartford Union High School. I have two more in Hartford right now. A police officer for about 20 years, small business owner. I developed and operated five Snap Fitness Centers. I've owned a real estate company and a conservative news site. And I've decided then, because there's no incumbent running in this district, I decided to run. And so I am running as a Republican. I've been endorsed by Washington County Sheriff Marty Schulteis, Waukesha County Sheriff Severson, the DA Mark Benson, Josh Shouman, the county executive, Scott Henke, the list goes on. And so I just want to introduce myself to you. I'm very interested, and I will be attending meetings in the future, especially when I do get elected. I want to make sure that any issues affecting Hartford are related up towards into the assembly to see if there's anything that the state can do to help the city. I'm going to stay after the meeting if anyone wants to meet with me individually. I would love all of your support and let me know, you know, what issues are affecting you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to make a public comment?
My name is Steve Hookstra. I'm owner of Hookstra Sweet Corn out of Wapon, Wisconsin. Up in the agenda, you're going to be talking about a permit for a produce stand over at Gammon's. I just wanted to let you know that, so Robert and Christine Smith had always bought corn for my family for 38 years and sold by the Dairy Queen. And when Scooter's coffee went up, then they lost their spot. So last year, nobody sold for, sold my corn in the Hartford area. And now with my son getting older, just got his license, it's kind of would love to come back to the Hartford area. And the Rapid Mart Chris over there has been really good to work with so far, and I'm hoping that you guys will approve that for me.
Thank you for your comments. Before we go any further, we've got all four of you listed in order here, so we'll get to that in just a couple minutes. Anybody else other than transient merchant license want to make a public comment, sir? Merchant license?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, and then we'll move on to transient merchant license. Item A, transient merchant license for Mad City Windows to go door-to-door for remodeling services. That must be you.
I guess my timing is just right.
Yes, it was.
Pardon for the appearance. I've been walking and sweating all day, so. My name is Will Green, and I work out of the New Berlin office of Mad City Windows and Baths. I believe we've had a permit in Hartford before. I, we've always, I think, had a pretty good reputation. We always make sure we present ourselves with clear items as to who we are, either shirts or hats. We always wear these badges. We're very careful. If there's no trespassing or no soliciting signs, we make sure we don't knock. And we always take no for an answer, which I think is important. I realize I've heard that there are some canvassing, commercial canvassing organizations now that kind of sort of push a little too hard, like do things like re-knock and that kind of thing. We have a cycle of four to six months. So when we do an area, we obviously take advantage of the permit as long as we can, but when it's time to get out, it's time to get out. And then we apply again four to six months later. I've only worked for the company for nine months, but I can tell you, we do quality work. And they, well, they've been very good to me. They treat their employees well, and I think that's why we attract a certain class of employee who believes in things like good manners and not being obnoxious. And I think that in fact, the net balance to the community will be positive because we do a very quality, we do a very high-quality service as well. And I'm sure there are some folks, just like everywhere else, who need either new windows, a new baths, or a new kitchen. And so we would really appreciate the opportunity to be allowed to canvas as, I guess the term is transient merchant. That feels kind of weird to me, but we'd really appreciate the opportunity very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments for this gentleman?
No.
If not, Shanna, pick up his license tomorrow.
Yep, you can come to the administration desk, which is where you filled out the paperwork tomorrow afternoon, and then we'll have the license ready for you.
Fantastic. Thank you all very much.
Sure. Item B is transient merchant license for Aptive Environmental LLC to go door-to-door for pest control services. Anyone here from that firm? Anyone here? I guess not. Shanna, they can hopefully pick up their license tomorrow if there's no objections. Anybody in the council?
Normally, we do not allow for a license unless they actually show up for the meeting. So at this time, we table that until
We table that?
The next meeting.
Sure. All right, tabled. Item C, transient merchant license for Stephen Hookstra. Stephen Hookstra's already been here, sells fresh produce at a farm stand. Any questions for Mr. Hookstra? If not, Shanna, he can pick up his license tomorrow.
Yep, tomorrow at the administration desk, afternoon.
Okay. Next item D, transient merchant license for Polar Bear Express Ice Cream LLC to sell prepackaged ice cream products out of his ice cream truck. Gentleman is here.
Hello, everybody. So I'm Alex Walters. I'm the owner and founder of Polar Bear Express Ice Cream. I'm based out of West Bend. This will be either my fourth or fifth year in Hartford selling prepackaged ice cream, and it's been an absolute pleasure the last four years. This is my fifth season entirely, but I believe I've done Hartford all five. So just looking forward to see everybody again. It's wonderful. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Just as a reminder, again, with anytime you're selling food, you have to stay away from food. I know you go through the residential areas, and that's where your market is, and that's perfectly fine. Just again, the only complaint we get, and it was never about yours particularly, is again, you have to stay away from areas that are already selling food or ice cream, as it would be.
Got it. Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
Nope.
If not, Shanna, license tomorrow?
Yep, pick it up tomorrow afternoon in the administration desk.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, mayor's report. The mayor's not here tonight, and I have nothing to report, so automatic request. I think I usually go first.
Yes.
Last week, as I sat home and read the local newspaper, there was a statement in there that a candidate for public office was being endorsed by the Hartford Common Council. Thanks to the efforts of Dean Curley, he got that corrected the next day. And what it boiled down to was the news media printed whatever profile was supplied to them. So what I'm getting at is, I encourage any of you to sign nomination papers. I mean, that's a great thing to do. We want people running for public office. But when you do an endorsement and you tie the Hartford Common Council to the endorsement, that's a problem. So do any endorsements, and I heartily encourage that, that's fine, but don't tie in the Hartford Common Council. Identify yourself as Wayne Rosniak, 118 Cary on Court, Hartford, Wisconsin. But that leaves the rest of you off the hook, okay? So there's nothing wrong with nomination papers, nothing wrong with endorsements, but it gets complicated, especially to the general public. Fortunately, it got corrected, but I don't know if everybody saw the correction the next day. And there's a perception by the public that we're endorsing a candidate, and it's certainly not the case. We as a council never endorse a candidate. So, got that, Jim? Okay, that's my comment for tonight. Next would be Alder Person Regan.
Nothing tonight.
Alder Person Curley.
To all candidates out there running for public office, run on your record of past accomplishments and not on some list of meaningless endorsements. Do not imply nor suggest wishful affiliations to bolster your resume. Voters are only interested in your honesty and your integrity. That's it.
Thank you, Dean. Alder Person Garza?
Nothing tonight.
Alder Person Turchi?
Nothing tonight.
Alder Person Webb?
Nothing tonight.
Alder Person Kohler?
Nothing tonight.
Alder Person Savage?
Nothing tonight.
Alder Person Phillip?
Steve, I got a question about the merchant licenses in general. Do we have any individuals, I thought a couple of years ago where they were doing solicitations and they did not have a license? You know, they'd come and come to a door, and do we have any way of identifying that they've gone through the process, got permitting for them to be able to solicit as far as that is concerned? And if we have any residents that are wondering whether or not they've gone through the approval of the council, how would they know that?
Yeah. So if someone does come to your door and you're questioning if they've gone through the process, and the process for everybody else who's watching at home, again, the process is that our police department will do a search to find out if there's coming up on Better Business Bureau or any other areas in which it would show that there's a red flag with that person going door-to-door or that organization going door-to-door. And so we then, any individual can simply ask to see if they have a city permit. The state issues permits, sales permits, but that does not negate their need to have a city permit. I recently had someone come to my door, and you've never seen someone with a bigger smile than me when someone comes to knock at my door. And I say, you know, you ever done this job and think, man, I knocked at the wrong door? I said, congratulations, you just knocked at the wrong door. I said, I have to ask you, do you have a seller's permit? Gentleman was happy as heck to show me, yeah, let me show you. And he throws up on his iPad or his pad that he had in there, and he shows me the local certificate. I said, that's awesome, except for one problem. He goes, what's that? I said, you're not in Slinger, Dorothy. And I said, you got to go to the next subdivision over, I said, to get into Slinger. I said, right now, you're in Hartford. I am? I said, you are. I said, so before I call 911 or I call my police chief, I said, by the way, I so happen to know the police chief by name. I said, you're going to want to leave this subdivision until you get a permit. Now, he was aware of the fact that he had to get a permit in Hartford. He was aware it was tonight, so I'm surprised he wasn't here tonight. But anyway, so, yeah.
You scared him off.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, well, that was my inquiry, right?
Yeah.
I've had several individuals come around, and I don't recall that we gave them permits. So they should have a permit in hand if they do solicitation. Is that the requirement of the city?
Yeah, in hand, a lot of them will have electronically. In other words, they've got it on their phone showing, city of Hartford, it's got our station area, and you'll recognize it right away. But yeah, if they don't have that, then let them know, and then also let them know that you'll contact the police chief and see who catches them first.
Yes, you will. Thank you for that clarity, nothing else.
Okay. Next item, standing committee reports, finance and personnel. Item number one, discussion and consideration of accepting the quote from Baseman Brothers Incorporated for up to an additional $116,902 for complete replacement of the rec center gym. Randy?
So yes, part of the 24 CIP included refinishing and replacing damaged boards for the gymnasium. Baseman Brothers came in in May, did a couple, three to be exact, test sample areas. We found standing water on top of the vapor barrier, which was evidence of a greater problem in their expertise. This meant, and their testing as well, showed that at least half, if not more, of the floor would need to be removed on the water damage that they had evidence of finding. We did contact the city's insurer to see if we could place a claim, because it wasn't a one-time event. We were not able to. They also brought, so they had an assessor there and an engineer, and determined that the water damage came from the exterior of the gym, where there's a crack between the walls of the gymnasium and the pavement outside, that moisture is seeping through there. There are openings within the inside of the gym wall that exposed conduit. It's felt that the majority of moisture was probably coming in through those areas as well. Simple fix, fixes for that, I'll drop the term simple, would be crack sealing the exterior and filling the cracks on the interior, as well as paint sealing the exterior walls of the gymnasium, which was part of the original project, which is being done currently. To replace the whole floor and not just piecemeal it together, it would cost more to piecemeal it with time effort and whatnot there. Baseman's proposal for, to replace the floors, $146,902. We have $29,750 left in our budget. And then, as approved by rec committee and finance before this, we also said that we'd bring in city staff to do the removal of the floor ourselves, which would save us an additional $28,158. So Baseman's quote total is $88,744. I'm still asking for the full $116,902, just for removal costs that we'll have as far as city staff removing it. Will we use the entire $28,000? No, not even close. And then the additional funding, I'm sorry, will come from the 210 rec building fund balance, which we do have enough funding in there to cover this cost.
All right, questions or comments for Randy? Tony?
Quick question. Well, maybe it's not so quick. Seems kind of odd that a building would crack like that to allow water in. Is there a design flaw that can be investigated in the return to the builder of the structure that can compensate us for some of this?
So when I use the term crack, it's actually a gap. So it's not a crack that occurs like in your driveway or in the roads or parking lot or something. It's a gap that pre-exists.
Was the gap not sealed?
It's a separation. So you're blacktop right up to the building, but then the building and the blacktop will separate, can separate, and then it causes that, much like it does at your house. If you have blacktop driveway or concrete driveway, you normally put a seal in between the two, right? But this situation, again, you blacktop right to the building, and then actually can even bring it up a little bit. The separation of that blacktop from that is where the water is getting in.
Okay, so the drainage is not taking care of that? Usually, when you put a foundation in a building?
Right, the tile, the tile that you normally put around and outside of the building, no, it's not, it's not getting into that, into that tile and pushing it back out.
So on the north, no, not north, the west side of the gymnasium abuts green space, and we don't have those issues due to the green space because the ground is porous and allows it to absorb that.
Okay. I was just wondering if there's a way you could look into if some sort of architectural flaw that should have been?
And plus the fact that this is a 24-year-old building. Anything that, we would be way outside of warranty by this time.
Okay. All right, just wanted to check if there's any way we can recoup something from a design mistake or something.
A little late, I think. A little late. Any other questions or comments?
And to that, I don't know that Randy brought this up this time, but he did at the finance and personnel. We did first check with our insurance company to see if they were going to cover it, because it's obviously an unexpected expense for us. But unfortunately, because it could not be directly
Linked to an event.
Linked to a single event. And I came up with some great single events, and they, I had dates down, I had everything ready to go, and no, they said, no, you can't prove that.
Jeff?
So Randy, you're going to fix the outside and some of the inside, and we believe that's going to mitigate any additional issues?
So
Because we don't want to put a brand-new floor in and five years from now have the same issue.
Hundred percent. So yes, cities, the cities insurers sent their assessor, the contracted engineer, they came up with these solutions. Basement floors, I shared with them what they had found to get their thoughts. They agreed. We also had city staff look at it, and they said this was certainly a feasible reason why this is happening.
And is there a warranty with the new floor that'll be installed?
There would be a warranty. Now, if it was something along these lines.
No.
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 No. But if there's a flaw with their install or something that happens, by all means, yes.
Okay.
They'll stand by their work. And the city staff, I don't remember if I said it either, will do the repair work. So they'll seal coat that crack. DPW will come in and do that, and then our staff will seal the holes on the inside for minimal cost.
Certainly, that helps. Any other questions or comments?
Well, and part of it is, as Randy had mentioned, they're already sealing the outside of the building. They knew of, you know, other, other issues with the moisture and so on and so forth. So they're taking, they're taking other precautionary measures already. And then this is just what we found when they opened it up. So I, I'm pretty much confident that they're, they're looking at the main cause and trying to fix it upfront so we don't have it happening in five years from now and moving down the road.
Sure.
As well as now we know what to look for. So they can, they can do more inspections on that on a, on a more regular basis.
Correct, yeah. As Joe said, we do know what to look for now, and if we see any signs of that, we'll be addressing it right away.
And as a council, we're certainly glad you found the money to pay for it. That's very important. All right, any other discussion? If not, I'll look for a motion on this.
I'm motion approve.
Is there a second by Justin Webb? Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Good luck, Randy. Item 10, resolutions and possible action thereon. Resolution number 3677, resolution adopting the 2023 DNR wastewater compliance maintenance report by Dan Denteas is with us tonight. Dan?
Good evening. This is our annual report card from the DNR, and we continue to have it grade A for all nine categories. So thanks to the utility committee and the common council for providing the tools we need to do our job and keep a straight A.
It wasn't exactly riveting reading, I must say, but nice job.
Everybody read it thoroughly from one end to the other. I just looked at the grades, and they looked excellent. So keep up that good work. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve this resolution. Alder Person Regan, is there a second out here by Turchi? Alder Person Turchi?
Motion by Alder Person Regan, seconded by Alder Person Turchi, approving the adoption of proposed resolution number 3677.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item V, resolution number 3679, preliminary resolution for levying of special assessments under section 660703 and 661109, Wisconsin statutes, for the purposes of funding a bid operating plan in the city of Hartford Central Business District. Steve?
Yeah, so as all of you know, in the downtown area, we have a geographic area, which is a part of a business improvement district. As a part of the business improvement district, the Levine Community will then have to collect the taxes for that. It is based on the plan and the budget that is put together by the bid board. And what you have before you is their annual bid district plan, and what you're doing is approving that for the special assessment. So it's like a voluntary tax to anybody who's never been a part of it. And they collect that about same amount of money pretty much every year. Their bid tax has been about $3, mil rate. And again, that is then sent out by us. We do all the administration of the funds. We collect all the funds, and then we give them a check to the bid. Any questions regarding this?
No other questions? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve this.
Don't move.
Motion by Alder Person Curley, seconded by Alder Person Savage.
Motion by Alder Person Curley, seconded by Alder Person Savage, approving the adoption of proposed resolution number 3679.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item C, resolution number 3684, resolution approving additional funds for city hall network hardware replacement project, CIP reference 67522015. Steve?
Yeah, so again, as we just talked about, the finance and personnel committee, we have this on the CIP budget for this year. This is for both hardware changes and updates to our network system. Again, you had approved this on the CIP projects list. However, after review from the contracted organization, which is Ontech, by the way, Ontech is an organization, is a company that basically we hire to do about 10 hours of work for us on a regular basis. So when it was time for us to update this, this network system, we went through them. The contract originally came in at the original cost of $125, and I apologize, I'm trying to pull this up right now. But after they reviewed everything, and we also reviewed the process by which we're going to replace all of the hardware. going to replace, um, all of the, the hardware, um, they came up with a new plan and then re-quoted it based on new numbers in which they had not originally seen when they first quoted on it, and thus the reason that, uh, plus the fact is, they're gonna have to bring in additional people to do all the switch over in one day, so that will be on a given Saturday in which we will be doing that. And so, uh, this new budget is $7,000 and some over the original budget that you approved, $7,624, and so the request is to take $7,624 that is currently in the, uh, fund balance for this account. This is not the general fund balance, this is the fund balance just for AV and, uh, and IT and use that for, um, uh, updating the, uh, the cost to $132,624. Any questions? So I'm gonna have Jack come out here and answer any of those questions.
No, the only thing that was mentioned is, if you guys caught it, they're gonna do this all on Saturday and the company had ran the regular rates and not a weekend rate, so the increase isn't doing with the, um, the premium on, um, off-hours, so, um, just to let you guys know, uh, that is, that is not the reason why we're having the increase, it's just the overall project, but they are charging us at regular, regular hour rates.
Also, a couple of other things I just kinda wanna bring up since Jack is here, uh, is the fact of, uh, again, this will be all done in one day and it was asked at the last meeting of what happens if all of a sudden they get halfway through and something goes wrong? Well, then they put everything back, is the way they had it with the old equipment, uh, and make sure that they're closed everything up before the end of the day. This will shut down our system, uh, and Jack can talk about that a little bit. For the time period in which we do this, it'll be a staged approach from City Hall, the different layers of City Hall up to, including the additional four buildings that are, again, are serviced through this network.
Yeah, we, um, we're gonna be working early on a Saturday morning, uh, getting in here and, uh, start attacking it, so to speak. And once we do that, the system will go down, uh, phones will go down and networking will go down. And as we replace the equipment, different sections of City Hall, library, DPW, uh, fire station, police station will start to come back up. But it is a step-by-step process and if steps one and two, we see problems that we can't overcome, then we back out and, uh, put it back, uh, put it back the way it was and, um, work on a plan B.
The, the question was brought up, Jack, is the fact of, um, Ontech in the past, they have done pro- uh, projects like this, yes?
Oh, yeah, right. Well, they are our, um, our vendor for, uh, networking services, so they have a very good handle on, on all of our, our, uh, equipment. Uh, so, um, they're quite familiar with our buildings and our networks and we have taken multiple tours, uh, going over all this equipment and making sure that, uh, now that we have what we need, so we're not stuck in the middle of a Saturday and we don't have what we need to get the job done, so.
And the Finance and Personnel has also brought up the fact, the idea, when our system is down for the police department, um, that we are, uh, the police department isn't basically shut down for that period of time, there, we are, do get dispatched over radio, so talk more about that.
Right, well, the phones will be for, uh, forwarded to the county now, calls that come in, we don't have, uh, 911 coming here, not that it would affect 911, but, um, 911 goes directly to the county. Any phone calls coming in for the police, um, will go to the county, um, but other buildings, uh, rec center, uh, the library, they will have to deal with outages, uh, for their phone systems for, um, much of the day, so, um, yeah, there will be outages, there will be an impact, but that's why we're doing it on a, on a Saturday or possibly even a Sunday.
Let's talk also about the utilities. Utilities obviously uses a lot of computers, phones, things like that, and we've addressed that also with the utility directors?
Yeah, I mean, I've already, have already talked, uh, preliminary discussions with, with these department heads, and then when we have a definite date, uh, that we know that, um, this'll go down, then we'll, we'll have plans to, um, uh, we'll have a plan in place to, uh, direct any incoming calls for maybe power outages or, or whatnot.
Sounds like you got your basis covered, so.
We're trying.
And Jack has brought this up with the other department heads probably for the last, at least, three months.
Right.
At department head meetings, and so they have been well, um.
You're prepared.
Updated on what's been going on and what, what to plan for.
Elder Person Curly?
Well, it sounds like everybody's got, is pretty well ready for this, but my question is, does every department have a contingency plan for, uh, survival in the event of, uh, loss of all, uh, communications? And.
Radios, right?
Yeah. So are they planning on executing those plans in, during this period?
I wouldn't say every department, every department doesn't need to address anything.
I know it's gonna be on a Saturday, so a lot of them aren't gonna be open.
It's, it's, yeah, it, it would just be the police department, uh, fire department is dispatched by the county via radio, um, the rec center, uh, there isn't business going on, on a Saturday, there's, uh, people that come in and, and use the rec center, but, but by and large, there's, there's no important business going on. The library, they're open for business, but, um.
Sure.
They'll have, they can deal with, uh, you know, being down for half a day or a day.
Many years ago, when I was on the emergency squad, I don't know if we had a planned shutdown, but we had a shutdown, we got through an entire weekend using the radios and it worked out absolutely fine, got paged out literally on the radio, responded on the radio and I don't wanna say we didn't miss the system at all, but we got by.
Right.
And again, each department may only be down for an hour or two, depending upon how long it takes to get through this, as, as we said, this is a staged approach, so that again, nobody's down for the entire day.
Well, I wouldn't say that. There could be some departments that are down more than others, um, because we are taking the critical part of the network down first, but, um, it won't be anything that's life-threatening, it won't be anything that's gonna cause problems, uh, public safety, anything like that.
Can you get police, fire, and rescue booted up first?
Well, that, yeah, that's the plan, yeah.
Good. All right, any other questions or comments? If not, I will look for a motion on this resolution.
Move to approve.
Elder Person Reagan, seconded by Elder Person Savage. Saw a lot of hands over there.
Motion by Elder Person Reagan, seconded by Elder Person Savage, approving the adoption of proposed resolution number 3684.
Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item D, resolution number 3685, resolution approving a certified survey map for 7542 Waterford Road located in the town of Hartford. Jacob finally gets to come up.
Finally, so yes, Deborah Zelmer Revocable Trust is looking to, uh, create two parcels off a 19.27 acre parcel. It's on Waterford Road where it kind of bears to the northwest once it gets over by, uh, Druid Lake, if I recall, that's, yeah, Druid Lake, so it's right over there. Uh, it's in our extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction, so we're reviewing this as the city. Uh, there are no issues in regards to the right-of-way dedication, it's proper, uh, the lot sizes and all that meet the, uh, extraterritorial zoning code of 13.1700, the city Hartford's municipal code. Uh, the only issue that was identified by the planning commission when it went before them in May was that the, if you look at the CSM, it has a shared driveway. Uh, I don't like shared driveways, nor does the city, uh, while it might be convenient in the short term, neighbors switch hands, arguments always ensue, they're much like, separate driveways are like fences, they make good neighbors. Um, so that's what we're looking for on this CSM, that's the only change and that's the only condition to the CSM that we're looking for at this time.
Elder Person Reagan?
Uh, we're the, uh, property owners receptive to that?
We had notified Deborah Zelma, Zelmer, the, the owner, she's the one splitting lots, it hasn't been sold off, the lots haven't been sold to anyone, so she will make the changes with the, the surveyor to, to, to rectify the situation.
So the proposal before us is with the changes?
Correct, to, to, uh, to approve the CSM with the condition that the driveway, the shared driveway is removed from the CSM.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Tony?
Just wanna make comment, shared driveways have always been kind of a, a mess and, uh, if, if the neighbors don't get along, they start putting fences down the middle of the driveway and nobody can get her in and out safely and so, um, yeah, it's a good change.
And with two, with two properties being 1.4 acres, there's no need for a shared driveway, this isn't like a 6,000 square foot lot, this is, this is a 1.4 acre lot.
Makes sense. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll look for a motion on this resolution.
Motion approved.
Elder Person Kohler, and seconded by Elder Person Curly.
Motion by Elder Person Kohler, seconded by Elder Person Curly, approving the adoption of proposed resolution number 3685 with the condition that the shared driveway be removed from the CSM.
Any further questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item eleven ordinances, no first or second reading, city administrators report. Steve?
Yeah. Item number A is discussion consideration of a concept plan for the Neville property from Newman Development subdivision on North Main Street. We had this before, um, the planning commission?
Correct.
That wasn't the question. Are you questioning if I remember right? Um, anyways, uh, but the concept plan did go before the, the, uh, the planning commission at their last meeting and again, they did approve unanimously. So this is, again, you, you got a chance to take a look at what it's, how it's laid out. Obviously with any development, uh, this is the first phase of many, many phases, so you have the, the concept plan and then you have the final approval, uh, you also have a developers agreement and in this situation, you have a trip agreement. Trip agreement would be like a TID, but it's like the sist- little sister of a TID. It just means that, uh, if approved, you get one-third or just the city's portion of the taxes, uh, to help offset some of the costs, uh, but we'll talk more about that at one of the five other meetings in which you'll have on this exact same project, so. Uh, you got a copy to look at this, uh, this, uh, how we go about this is that we take the plans in front of the, uh, project committee, the project committee is basically made up of most of the department heads, um, and it's important that they review all of these plans because they, each one of these has a little different, um, uh, situation regarding the service to those areas. So we look at things like, um, water, sewer, electric, utilities, uh, we also look at, EMS service, which is a huge deal, uh, with these development, uh, uh, projects, these concept plans, and so, uh, all the department heads have taken a look at it and, uh, at this point in time, none of them have any issues with the, with the, um, uh, concept plan at this time. Any questions? Yes, Elder Person Webb?
We had a comment earlier about the plan and the abutment to her property, is there any, like, response to that?
Uh, I mean, we, we can obviously bring it back to the, the developer. Um, in any one of these projects, the developer's gonna try to get as much value out of every single square inch of property as they possibly can. Um, you know, it's, uh, the question of, do you go a quarter acre, do you go to a half acre, do you go to a third of an acre, whatever it is, uh, they're gonna want to pack in as much as possible. When you bring that up also, I had someone recently ask me from the township and they said, how come the city doesn't like five-acre lots? And I said, well, it's not the city that doesn't like five-acre lots, developers don't like five-acre lots. I'm, we're fine with having a five-acre lot, it's the cost to get all the utilities to a five-acre lot and then to the next five-acre lot and then the next five-acre lot is what, and, and no, no developer wants to pay that kind of money to put all those utilities to spread them out that far, right? And so that's why developers like to have more condensed area, especially when you're talking today, when everyone's trying to build houses for that 300 to 400 to, you know, less than $500,000. If you have utilities spread that far out, they're gonna want as, as condensed as possible. But we do understand and, and we do hear, um, the request, we will take it forward to, uh, the developer, uh, New, uh, Newman Development and ask if they would consider that. Again, it's currently 111 units, I believe it is?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, my memory isn't gone, and, uh, so we can ask if they would be willing to, to reduce that to 110. Yes, Elder Person Turchi?
And as I recall, looking at it, they're mostly just normal city lots, size-wise.
Yeah, yeah, so most city lots are gonna be in between a quarter and a half.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
And again, remember, it's not because we don't like bigger lots, it's just the fact that nobody wants to develop them for the price it's gonna cost. Elder Person Kohler?
Yeah, no, um, I, I totally agree with, you know, listening to, um, the, the, the people out there in the area, I mean, we're trying to, we're looking at the development, um, they, they answered a lot of the questions that, um, uh, came af- came in front of us when we looked at this before, um, putting single-family homes in, um, watching for the water drainage, as we know, um, and, uh, taking one more consideration on things, asking too much for this builder, it's not huge. What was brought up as well during the, um, uh, the, the planning commission meeting was, um, David Perquette, uh, brought up the fact of the pump stations in a way to work it that it may, um, and the builders looking at doing that too, it just, it's just a, a way of, um, moving the waters through easier, um, instead of doing smaller ones, doing a larger one, it may affect some of the cost of the infrastructure, but that's something that they're, they're considering, right?
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, um, so it, it's nice to have Dave on the planning commission, uh, because he said, you know, I don't remember us finding out that we could, we could gravity flow it, uh, for the sewer. And, um, anyways, the, the contractor did the next morning go back to his engineer and say, uh, they don't believe you can gravity flow this because you'd have to, it's such a deep area and you're coming, you're, you're going, going in essence uphill to get through it, but his engineer said, based on their measurements, they feel that they're gonna be able to get it, they may be able to and have to do some grinder pumps, uh, furthest on the north, uh, northeast corner of this, um, uh, uh, concept of the, of the plan, so. Elder Person Philip?
So you're showing the median, you know, of .22 acres, which I'm assuming most of them are in the .19 acre range. Do we have any concerns about the smaller footprint of, of a subdivision like this with respect to future of that space, the ability, you know, to impact the, the size of the home that can go on it? Do we, do, do we give any guidance to the developer or we'll just let the developer maximize his profit on a specific property?
I'll let Jacob talk more about that, but first thing is, is obviously in us, in our city ordinances, it basically, um, shows what kind of, uh, size of property you can have, um, and so it's not just, I mean, they're just not allowed to just push everything into it, but I will let Jacob talk more about that.
So again, and the proposed development, uh, we're looking at, the average here is 10,330 or 3, 322 square feet, so it's about a quarter acre, uh, the median again is 9,000, which is, you know, the in-between number, and then the minimum size is 8,400. I don't have any concerns with the densities at this point in time, uh, these will allow for substantial homes, well over 2,000 square feet, uh, from what I've experienced in other communities, uh, Watertown, we had a minimum lot size for a single family was 8,000, we had no, no issues with the footprint or the size of the structures there at assessing well at a high value for the city of Watertown. Monami Falls is a different animal, different beast, uh, they want their, they want their lots a lot larger, uh, but they're, they're in the MMSD sanitary district, so they have, they have advantages that we don't have here, uh, but for the most part, uh, I'm not concerned about even going down to 8,400 square feet for a lot to allow for a development, a, a house or a structure that's well over 2,000 square feet with an attached garage and with still, uh, good setbacks that aren't crowded where we're packing them in there where it's gonna seem highly dense. I think once you get down to the 6,000 square feet size lots and stuff like that, which is not part of this development, that's when you have to have discussions about density and stuff like that and even talk of, start going in towards alley discussions of alleys, and again, none of this is occurring on this development, this is all simple, single-family, uh, urban, not urban, but more suburban-style development.
Thank you. I, I don't want to, uh, miss a good opportunity, uh, Steve from the dev- the developer is here, uh, from Newman Company, so if somebody has a question for him.
Thanks, Steve. Hi, I'm Steve DeKleen.
Isn't it common now in the building industry, the young professionals that'll buy your house? Isn't it common now in the building industry, the young professionals that'll buy your house, want a large house, want a very little lot? They want to spend their weekends working in the yard. They're young professionals, they got a lot of recreation stuff to do. Is that the trend now in the building industry?
Yeah, that's a national trend, and that absolutely rings true in Wisconsin. You know, we're, our, our strike zone's about, like Jacob said, about a 2,000 square foot house, maybe an 18 or 19, sorry, 18 or 1900 square foot ranch, or a 22, 2300, two-story home. Our 70-foot lot is very typical, that's exactly what we push for. It's about 80% of the lots we develop sort of fit that formula. Seven-and-a-half-foot side setback in Madison, you'll see a five-foot side setbacks. I mean, you know, Madison's a little more progressive on the real estate development end, so you'll even see a smaller lot over there. But yeah, this is a national push, it's a response to people who don't want to work in yards, and the fact that infrastructure has grown really, really expensive, and we just, we need to put in less roads. It just doesn't work anymore. I don't know what's happened, I feel like construction inflation has just outpaced wages. And so as a result, we really need to be careful about the amount of street we put on the ground.
Sure.
It also helps you, because then there's less street you have to maintain moving forward. So, yeah, it's been, it's a national push, and it, it feels good when I see our finished neighborhoods. I think they feel really good.
Any other questions? Elder Person Garza?
Yeah, I'm just, just want to make sure that there's enough space for fire trucks to get through if cars are parked on both sides of the road.
Okay.
It's one of my main concerns for safety, just want to be able to get to the houses.
Again, as, as I mentioned before, all the counts, all the staff members, department heads have gotten a chance to review it, including the fire chief, and he has approved.
That's good. And I just wanted to make my statement on that, that's, that's what we're here for, right?
As far as street width or any of your specific, any of your standard specifications. Really, the one accommodation we are looking for is you don't currently have a seven-and-a-half-foot side setback. Isn't that right, Jacob?
Correct.
I think it's a, I think you do have a 70-foot wide lot, so it's the same size, but I think you have a 10-foot side setback in your zoning code. So we'd be looking for an accommodation there. It just gives us an extra five foot. We can do garage bump outs and three-car garage and things that we see people want.
Any other questions? Elder, President Rusniak?
I'm not trying to be funny, but you will have sidewalks in that subdivision.
Correct, yep. I love sidewalks. I grew up with sidewalks, we love them.
That's a personal thing for me, for this council.
Any other questions? If not, President Rusniak?
Are we going to make a motion, look for a motion to approve this proposal? We are looking for a motion to approve the concept plan. Elder Person Turchi, seconded by Elder Person Savage.
Motion by Elder Person Turchi, seconded by Elder Person Savage, approving the concept plan for the new-built property, Newman Development subdivision on North Main Street.
Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is adjournment. Who gets adjournment around here? Tina Savage, Elder Person Savage, and seconded by Joe Philip.
Motion by Elder Person Savage, seconded by Elder Person Philip, to adjourn at 7:53 PM.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, we are adjourned.